This evening between the City of McMinnville City Council and Visit McMinnville Board of Directors, and we'll go ahead and open this joint meeting and welcome everyone, those in the audience, but also those of Visit McMinnville. We love to be in discussions about the good things that you're doing, and so tonight will be an opportunity to hear a presentation as to kind of where we've been, where we are, where we're going, and then the budget presentation, and we'll have an opportunity during this meeting for the council to vote on the Visit McMinnville's budget so that we know that that's taken care of as we go. So we have members of the board that are sitting on the dais with us, and we welcome them, and we've got Kitree and Jeff that will be making presentation on behalf. But again, this is an open dialogue, and we encourage comments as we go through. So Jeff, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you to get started, and then we'll just move forward.
Thank you very much. I think that we're having a little digital issue, so I'm not going to be able -- you have the printed copies, I'm going to just -- we'll have to follow along with us, so I apologize to everyone in the audience that doesn't have this in front of them, but we do have these documents available both on the city's website and will be shortly available on our website. So thank you for having us. I'm Jeff Knapp, Executive Director for Visit McMinnville, and this is Kitree McGuire, our Marketing Manager. We make up the entire team and staff for Visit McMinnville, and we're honored to do what we do on your behalf, and we're excited to tell you about all of the things that we've accomplished this year and looking forward to our plans for even bigger and brighter next year. So in front of you is our annual budget and plan for fiscal year 19. I can't believe it's already 2019. The first section here outlines our board. We have a very engaged, active board of diverse community tourism stakeholders. Quickly, just acknowledge who those are. Erin Stevenson, our Board Chair. Maria Stewart is our Board Vice Chair. Ellen Britton, Board Treasurer. Cindy Lorenzen. Ty Rollins. Emily Howard. Danny Chisholm. Jen Fierro. Courtney Cunningham, who is also with us here this evening. And then, of course, City Manager Jeff Towery and City Counselor Kelly Minkie, who both serve as non-voting members. So thank you for your time and all of the energy you put into guiding us. Just a reminder of who we are and what we do. Our mission is to enhance the economic vitality of our community by promoting McMinnville as a year-round overnight tourism destination, and we do so by maximizing our collaborative partnerships and efficiently activating transient lodging tax revenue into effective sales and marketing programs, cultivating a world-class visitor experience. So in essence, we're an innovative marketing organization with one client, that's you, the city, and we are attracting as many people to come here, spend a lot of money with our local businesses, and stay overnight. We've had a very large year, big year, we've accomplished a lot, and we're very proud of. We'll just go quickly into kind of looking behind before we look forward. In fiscal year 2018, we increased transient lodging tax by 6.1% in the 2017 calendar year. We had given ourselves a 4 percent -- we had budgeted a 4% growth and given ourselves a 7% stretch goal, so we feel good about the 6% increase. This is a normalized number. We did receive an increase in TLT. As you know, the city voted to increase transient lodging tax. These numbers that we're reflecting are normalized. The actual increase overall is closer to 25% across the board. So when we're looking at our progress, we're comparing apples to apples and trying to get those real numbers out. So that's what you'll see reflected in here. We increased our website sessions on Visit McMinnville to 91,000 unique website visitors. It's a 20% increase year over year. One of the ways that we measure our success, and we have two ways that we measure success. One, through the increased lodging tax, more people coming more frequently, spending more time and spending more dollars. And then all of our marketing efforts direct people to our website, to entice people to come and stay here and to get them from our website to local businesses. So we want to lead with those two measurables, and we had a 20% increase this year, so we feel very confident and happy about that. Our social media channel followers grew on Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram, 37%, 49% and 10%. We created a new winter television commercial, so we focused the majority of our budget and time on trying to attract people during our winter and shoulder seasons, the slower times of year. So we created a new winter television campaign, social media ads, and we use data and survey data to direct those buys. We earned over 3.4 million earned media impressions, and we gained those through our PR efforts and media relations. It's been a big year for us. We exceeded our goal by 177%, much due to the very -- our first part of our fiscal year in July and August, we were preparing for the eclipse, which had a big impact nationally and internationally, brought attention to McMinnville. And then the opening of the Atticus Hotel was a big push for town. A lot of media garnered through that as well. Even without those two things, we are set to steadily exceed our goal. We have exceeded our goal and very proud of that. We executed Board Level Strategic Planning Retreat in January, focusing on a one-to-three year plan, and we'll talk a little bit about things that we'll be implementing for next year based on that. We deployed the increased transient lodging tax dollars to complete a comprehensive feasibility study to support future group sales investments, and we'll talk a little bit about that on the second part of this evening. We have a conference feasibility study that we will be presenting to council. We worked with the -- we worked and founded the McMinnville Community Wayfinding Committee, where we focused on creating easily accessible information systems that guide people around town. We started that a little over a year ago, organized local community members, and worked on raising funds to create a cohesive system that's branded, that gets people to and from the city's assets, and we will be handing that over to the city to be a part of the larger strategic plan as that develops. We brought regional, national, and international media and fam tours to town with custom itineraries showcasing our city as a premium tourism destination. We worked with our PR company and with Travel Oregon to host quite a few regional, national, and international groups, and we will continue to do that moving forward even more in the next year. We applied for several grants this year, really, really lucky, owe that to Kitree's really great grant writing. We utilized those $27,500 from Travel Oregon to connect our website to what's called the Oregon -- it's called Otis. What is it, Oregon Travel?
Oregon Tourism Information Systems.
Oregon Tourism Information Systems. It's basically a robust database that just increased the functionality of our website exponentially, so people can find and sort and filter and geolocate, map where things are in our community even quicker. So we did a big upgrade to our website this year, predominantly funded through grant funding. We distributed McMinnville Lookbooks and Wine Walk Passports to welcome centers around the state and premier corporate clients like Boeing, Intel, and AAA. We worked with the city, local interests, and other economic development organizations to contribute to a cohesive, long-term economic development plan. I've sat and worked with the city on both the strategic plan and the economic development plan, and extremely excited about that opportunity, and kudos to the city for the foresight to be planning so far in advance. We received another grant from Oregon Wine Country License Plate Funding, and we developed a winter marketing campaign promoting February as Taste McMinnville Month, so picking one of the lowest seasons to really encourage folks to come here in the winter, spend dollars with our local merchants and book hotel rooms. And we use those dollars to purchase radio ads, create billboards, and other efforts in order to attract those folks. We developed a win in Oregon Wine Adventure Sweepstakes, partnering with like-minded luxury brands and earning over 100,000 impressions. And we created a consumer newsletter with the 2,700 folks, in addition to people that we had on file, to reach out two quarterly to let them know what's going on, why they would want to book a trip to McMinnville, and looking forward all of the things that we have to offer. We created collateral for on-ground visitor support, including Wine Walk brochures, dining and tasting maps, directional walk, cycle, drive maps for visitors from Linfield. Linfield brings a lot of guests to the college campus, and often they're there and they don't realize that they're part of a bigger city, so it's showing them how quickly they can access all of the resources in town. We partner with local cycling professionals to develop a collection of cycling imagery and safe wine country cycling routes. We'll talk a little bit about this in our plans for next year, but we feel that diversification of tourism, things to do here is important. We all know we have food and wine in abundance, but what are all of the other things that we can work to amplify and build out? We've collaborated with regional tourism stakeholders and industry organizations to begin development of a new transparent stakeholder-driven county-wide tourism effort. This has -- on a county level, tourism is not healthy as far as our connection to Travel Oregon, and we've been working to play a leader in rebuilding that to deliver assets and create this network of communications that should benefit our whole region. So we can talk a little bit about that as well in our next part. We also held a dynamic media activation in New York City. This is a big -- this is our first out-of-McMinnville PR engagement. We were very proud of that success. We highlighted lifestyle, food, craft beverage, and travel writing. We invited travel writers to highlight those things and introduce them to McMinnville, the new Atticus Hotel, our new Bless Your Heart Burgers, wines, beers, coffee. We had -- we partnered with our PR company to invite guests to an activation on Park Avenue in New York, invited writers from Food &amp; Wine. We invited 150 writers, we had about 30 show up. Wine Spectator, Food &amp; Wine, Esquire Magazine, not to mention more, but we have already secured several trips from that that will be coming to do pieces about McMinnville in the upcoming year. If you turn to the next page, these are the earned media outlets here that we -- some of them that we touched, some of the highlights this year, Sunset Magazine, New York Times, Food &amp; Wine, big Vogue article that I'm sure you're familiar with, Orbitz, Forbes. I won't go through all of them, but it's been a really good year for McMinnville PR. We've got the over 3 million impressions, people hearing about how great we are. Next, McMinnville Tourism by the Numbers, some bigger things to look at, the 6.1% increase in TLT, 20% growth in our website, $111.5 million worth of visitor spending in Yamhill County. Tourism is on the rise, both on the state level and in our area, and we are excited to direct them to come and spend that money here locally. Our goals for 2019. We'll try to move as quickly as -- please stop me and ask questions at any time. I feel like a dialogue would be good, so please, any questions? We're just sitting here talking at you. Our goals for 2019 that our board has -- will be measuring our success by is to increase our annual transient lodging tax revenue by 9%. We're going to give ourselves, again, a budgeted increase of 4%. We're going to be pushing a stretch goal of 9%. We feel that that will be -- that's our North Star this year. So execute strategy to attain 150,000 unique website visitors, so we are going to push ourselves for a 25% increase over our expected FY18 wrap-up here for our website. This will be a big year for us for branding. We have allocated funding to work with a creative agency to create a new Visit McMinnville brand identity. We never really -- when we got started, we started quickly. We created some brand elements virtually internally, and we're going to go through a professional process of really nailing down that look and feel and use that to drive a comprehensive two-year ad campaign. So instead of -- I feel like we've been very successful with one-off short campaigns, and we're looking to create something that's a little ever -- more evergreen, and our investment will last a little longer. So we'll be working on that campaign this year as well, targeting, again, that low and shoulder season, overnight visit and destination awareness. We'll be activating data to support targeting of that ad mix, so we -- our buys and how we spend our money for advertising will be driven by the content that we create and the data that supports our target market. We will be creating a strategic plan to target group sales opportunities for McMinnville by activating the additional revenue, that additional 2% that was voted in for transient lodging tax. We're going to increase folks' focus on brand awareness for our Wine Walk promotion. That, again, the idea that someone can park their car and walk safely to the quality -- the number and the quality of wineries that we have locally is a strength, and we're going to continue to amplify that. We're going to engage social media to drive increased visits to Visit McMinnville. Over the past year, we've switched from spending a lot of dollars on gathering likes to really engaging the people that do like us and trying to get them to perform an action or the advertisements that we target to get them to respond and get to our website, as opposed to just liking our page, and we'll continue to do that through the next year. Secure regional and national non-paid media coverage resulting in 1.56 million impressions. Optimize our website by strengthening filtration capabilities and solidifying our event calendar. We know that when people come to the website, they're looking -- the top two things they're looking for are what's going on, events, and places to stay. So beyond that, all of the dining and options, we want to get people exactly what they're looking for. So are you looking for a dog-friendly vegan bakery? Well, if we've got it, you'll be able to find it and get there quickly. Enhance investments in our website to increase that organic traffic by 25% through the use of search engine optimization and investments in search engine marketing. We will be handing over the Community Wayfinding Master Plan to the city for their potential adoption as an ongoing part of the build-out of the infrastructure here in the city. We're going to do February Taste McMinnville Month and make it even better this year. We're going to analyze the areas to improve and get stronger stakeholder engagement, especially on the lodging side of things. We continue to partner with Lamont Valley Wineries Association. This year, we're going to take advantage of two very large trade shows, Pinot in the City activations that happen in major metropolitan areas. We're going to attend those and work with their PR company to amplify our voice and hopefully secure even more media and potential visits through that partnership. We're very excited about that. That's a unique opportunity that's just starting with Lamont Valley Wineries Association, and we see a lot of opportunity in partnering with them. We're focused this year on bringing more attention to our local arts and culture. We are creating a public arts and gallery map, walking map, and driving should you need it, but that will have printed assets and will both have -- and will have web assets as well, bringing highlight -- highlighting the abundance of public art and galleries that we have locally. We will work to identify and lead opportunities to further develop McMinnville as a diverse tourism destination through partnerships with higher education, arts and culture, outdoor rec, and other regional tourism partners. We are currently doing that and will continue to do that, working with Linfield as a large asset for the community. We've been working with the Bureau of Land Management on coordinating efforts that they have for investment into camping and mountain biking trails on the Nostaca River Corridor. We know that we want to be the base camp for people that visit, but when people visit, they also want to do, you know, they have all sorts of things they want to do. So we've been working with the BLM on some -- it sounds like they'll be putting in quite a few dollars up there in the next couple of years, multi-millions of dollars, to improve those sites and create some trails, and they're going to work with us to help design and develop what could be used for our city, both for the people that live here and people that visit. We plan to distribute a quarterly Consumer E-Newsletter and grow our list. We will have another Executive Board Retreat and Strategic Visioning Session. Continue to work collaboratively with all of the economic development organizations here in town. Improve our promotion and connectivity at our airport. We're excited about the new airport management and the opportunities that we have to leverage, attract guests to use that airport, and then provide assets for the folks that are landing and getting them into our community to spend dollars. We will be kicking off some official Visit McMinnville committee structure to help achieve overarching goals. We saw success with the wayfinding committee, and we want to use that as we're a staff of two. We want to leverage our board and community members to help, you know, help the big lift that we have in front of us. We plan to continue to actively participate in the city's economic development strategic planning and provide community leadership in networking and leveraging resources for the elevation of hospitality and service for frontline tourism stakeholders. So I'm working with Chamekata, Oregon State University, and local economic development partners to identify dollars and projects that could support hospitality here locally. Those are a lot of words. Those are our goals. We have a lot to do this year.
Jeff, if I may, you know, a very aggressive focus for 2019, but having been associated with your group since the beginning, I know that it's going to be done, and it's going to be done from a quality standpoint, and as you can see, just so many things can be done simultaneous as you're doing some of this work. But it's just great to see the breadth of the things that are happening at Visit McMinnville, and such monumental growth, and, you know, we celebrate every victory on those earned opportunities that we have by having people come out and visit us and then go back and write about it. So again, I think Kelly could say the same thing, and Jeff could say the same thing, is we're having an opportunity to be with your board that we can really hear and see where you're going, and we're very excited.
Thank you. I'm excited, too. I might not sound it from reading, but I have the best job ever, so it's hard to -- I feel like I have so much to tell you that it's hard to get it all in in this small time, so those goals that we have here then roll into our budget. How are we going to achieve those goals? So you have in front of us the fiscal year 2019 roll-up. So we are budgeting a 4% increase in TLT, which would bring our estimated -- the 70% of the lodging taxes that are collected and pushed through to us. Our estimated city funding would be $831,938, a significant increase from our previous budget. Expenses broken down, general admin of $211,955, and then our marketing efforts being $619,983. If you look below, you can get an overview of how we've performed historically as far as TLT collections go. You can see that over this last year, we've averaged a 6.1% normalized growth. The actual growth is closer to 25%. You can see where July, August, September, we have the bulk of our -- you can see the cyclical nature of visits right now. We're really focusing on our -- really, that this first quarter, January, February, March, is the biggest focus. We need to get folks here, and we are doing that through marketing and through expansion of group sales opportunities. So we're looking to bring on a consultant to help strategize, look at our local assets and see what we have, what type of inventory of interior spaces, sports, arts and culture, conference facilities, and we're dedicated to put marketing dollars and potentially, if we have enough assets, to bring on an employee to act as a sales capacity to attract and book visits for those times of the year. Our budget breakdown is on the other -- as far as how we're spending our money is on the other page. Marketing is three-quarters of our budget. Our general admin is right at a quarter. The biggest pot of dollars that we will be spending this year, the high level, is advertising at 35%. Public relations has proven to be a really great investment for us. A lot of those stories that we pitch, those Vogue magazine articles, the New York Times, Forbes, that's all in public relation, and it has a real high value, so we're putting a significant amount of money into that. And then this year will be a big production year for us. We're going to be branding and coming up with new creative content. It's been -- two years ago, we invested in photography and videography, which is -- we've used kind of to the end of it, and we need to start creating more. It's all about content for us. So this will be a big content year, and next year we'll have even more room to spend on the advertising. So this is how our current fiscal budget breaks down. Questions about those dollars or the plan? Any jokes? Stories? Yes?
Wendy?
Please.
Okay. As always, and it's good to see. It's just a kind of a hit. Thank you. Is that better? Just hit home with me about the reach of our community back to the East Coast, New York City and other places, and little old McMinnville.
I know.
Isn't so little anymore, but it's good to see all the resources go to good practices as far as marketing and advertising, and the board is great. A lot of great people on that board. I'm sure it's a big help and...
It's good to have direction from people with high standards and a hard work ethic.
Yeah, and committed to the community. That's a big one, so very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wendy?
It's really well done. We really appreciate all the work that you do and the quality of the work. It's commendable. I did have a quick question. The April, May, June for the projected growth has two that are fiscal year 19. I assume that's a typo. Which one is the...
No, it's actually because our fiscal year goes through June.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, so we've got the actual for Q1 of 2018 here. That's the dark blue, and then it cycles through another year and a quarter.
Our calendar, our budget year starts non-fiscal, so we are July 1 is the start of the new fiscal year, so that's what you're seeing.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Thank you for all your work. Yeah, it's great.
You're welcome. Thanks for being a great community that we can market.
Any other comments before we continue?
It's a remarkable board, and I really enjoy seeing it, and I think it's a lovely report. Well done.
Thank you, Counselor. So we also -- so we have conference feasibility study that we did. So to -- let's go back a little bit. One of the things that we can do to increase spending here locally is -- our biggest opportunity is in the shoulder, the low, shoulder and low seasons, which really run starting sort of December, end of November through April, May. And one of the ways that we feel we can address this is by attracting groups, group sales. To that end, we are -- our greatest strengths that we have as a community is not -- are not event spaces or facilities to host this type of thing and hotels of substantial number to accommodate something like a conference. So we have some great assets, and we are currently focused... So we have some great assets, and we are currently focusing on smaller things, smaller conferences or niche-type group events that we can target and attract. When we came to council last year and talked about that opportunity and voted the increase in TLT, we took those dollars to go and invest in a feasibility study for, you know, pie-in-the-sky dream. You know, the question, can McMinnville sustain a conference slash and/or convention facility? And if so, how might that work? What kind of investment? How would it work? What kind of dollars? What kind of jobs could it create? And could Visit McMinnville play a role in that? We went out and interviewed a few different companies, referenced through Travel Oregon and other cities that had worked with companies, and Johnson Consulting rose to the top of the list. We chose them. They had worked all over, they work all over the world. They've worked on several cities in Oregon, including Salem, Seaside. They're well-versed in this. And we basically went out and said, proposed, you know, feasibility study, see what could be, what could happen here in McMinnville. And what I gave you is a 100-page study. I'm going to give you a very high-level cliff note of this. I'm not an expert in this area, and if, for like, deep dive, I'd be happy to set up a meeting with the consultant. But essentially, our objectives were to see what the market and industry potential was here in McMinnville. You know, if, what size of facility would best serve the community? Where would it go? How would it function? And how could we pay for something like this? Johnson Consulting came out, met with community members for three days, met with the city, met with local institutions, college, Evergreen, event planners, event venues, regionally did some work to put this together. And essentially, they boil down to the fact that they feel that we, our community could support, there is market for a conference facility, in their opinion, a 40,000-square-foot conference facility that would serve a slightly larger type of conference that is deficient here in the Northwest as far as facilities to accommodate. And they highlighted how, you know, the challenges would be that we don't currently have hotel inventory to support something like that. We would need a hotel room, they suggest, or hotel block, a single hotel property or two of, a couple of hundred hotel rooms to support such a facility. But that we were, it would be a, they would recommend an investment in a conference facility based on their findings. That being said, they would project that a facility like this would run a deficit for the first five years. And if it were funded, you need to be a public-private partnership. They identified certain types of taxation that could be used to leverage a facility like this, and they identified some sites locally that it could, that it could work. Because of the lack of hotel rooms here locally and because of the amount of dollars, Visit McMinnville at this time was not, you know, able to move forward with something like this, but we do think that it's something that the city should consider in the future as part of the strategic plan and that there could be opportunities. Clearly, the community could support a conference facility based on these findings of a 40,000-square-foot facility. That's a very high-level look at things. I'm happy to answer questions as I can.
Any questions for Jeff on the Johnson-Johnson study?
Yeah, I have a few. What are some of the smaller niche things that you, you mentioned earlier that you're looking at to boost tourism in the shoulder season?
Through this study or through their plan?
I have a question about this study, too, but in your introduction to the study, you said that you were also looking at a number of other smaller initiatives, some niche things to booster, to boost tourism in the shoulder season.
So we're focusing group sales as an opportunity. So we're, I think, I'm not sure which comment I'm referring to, but what we are doing actively this year as an organization, we've set aside money and we'll be interviewing a contractor to help us plan a group sales strategy, to analyze if we can bring in a salesperson in-house to sell the assets that we have. Do we have enough indoor space? Can we, can we treat McMinnville as, downtown McMinnville as sort of a, an event campus? We are up against, event planning is something where people want to say, okay, it's a one-stop-shop. I have a group of 100 people. We need breakfast, lunch, and dinner. We have limited resources for those types of events, so we'd be focusing on groups of 50 or 75 that we might be able to attract, and then going out aggressively and marketing to those markets, whether it's sports, or if it's healthcare, or if it is, you know, corporate entities like Nike or Intel. So we'll be putting dollars into that strategy and then targeting, marketing materials to, creating marketing materials to support that with hopes of bringing on an employee to do that full-time.
Okay. So that, and so all those different initiatives, but all kind of under the umbrella of looking to promote the group sales. That's the...
Group sales is the biggest untapped thing that we're going to do. All of our marketing that we are gearing up, the campaign that we are going to be creating, the material, whether it's, and I don't know what that will be yet, television, radio, you know, we can do it a million different ways, but the message is going to be basically making winter sexy. Why you want to come here at this, that time of year?
Because you like the rain.
Because you love rain.
They won't say quite that way, though.
Okay.
I mean, that's our biggest goal. So we can, I mean, we're going to try a lot of different things, and then we'll report on how they work. But the biggest opportunity that we're not doing, I mean, not aggressively, have not aggressively done yet, is this group sales avenue.
Okay. And then you said, also kind of in your introduction to this, that this was like the pie in the sky. So whose pie is it? Or what, is that like the board's perspective that a convention center would be the best thing for McMinnville? Because I looked at these, this website a lot, too, and they, this consulting group looks at a lot of different things, but you said you specifically asked them to evaluate a convention center for McMinnville, so...
No, well, we asked them to identify opportunities for group sales, and they focused on a convention center. So pie in the sky, meaning just a big hairy audacious goal. I don't know that I would recommend that we build a conference center. I don't know that that's, it's just an option. We could also have a live music arts and culture venue. They steered us away from arts and culture based on, we have data to support why they would not recommend us do that, which I can share. But there's a lot of different ways to attract group sales. Sports is another one, large indoor sporting events. They steered us away from that as well, so I don't have all of the reasoning and the logic behind that, but I'd be happy to share it with you. And I am not recommending a conference center.
I was going to say, if I could just, as board chair, I would want to clarify that, no, Visit McMinnville's board is not coming to council with a recommendation that council take on a convention center. What our board sought out to do was to bring in some professional consultants to look at all of, all of McMinnville's various opportunities when it comes to group sales. And the thing that they, much to our interest, zeroed in on was the convention center aspect. So it wasn't an ask from us to say, will you please come and evaluate whether or not we should do a convention center? We said, we'd really love for you to take a survey of our community, look at our assets, look at our opportunities, and tell us when we're looking at different segments of the marketplace, leisure being one that we do very well in during the tourist season, but we know we are missing out on a lot of the corporate and group business that other communities do very well with. You know, so what are those opportunities? That consulting team came back to us, and they identified convention spaces being one of those opportunities for McMinnville to, to consider. A recommendation from our board that the city moved forward with that is, we feel beyond our purview to do. Our job was to look at what are our opportunities and bring those to council for your consideration of what is the right direction for McMinnville in the long run as a community, and we will always do our best to market whatever that direction is. Would you say that your board endorses this, the document that you supplied to us? Absolutely. We endorse the document that, that we're supplying to you. What the city decides to do with that document is up to the city of McMinnville. Our board isn't endorsing a specific direction, but we would definitely stand behind the quality of the consulting team that came and evaluated our opportunities and our assets. But again, what as a community we decide to do with those opportunities and assets is a whole other conversation. It's beyond our purview.
Visit McMinnville is not making a recommendation.
No.
It's just providing the...
We are committed to making investments in data that drive our decisions. So for us to say, you know, when I say pie in the sky, we know group sales is a potential big opportunity. So when we go to a professional consultant and say, listen, it could be any of these directions. What are your recommendations? You know, we have data now, so you can act on, you know, I don't, I don't think that it's, we don't have to act on that data, but it tells us, it tells us, it brings up debate for the future. It could create economic development, and that's, at the end of the day, that's what we're here to do.
It was the right question to ask and bringing a consultant in, because, you know, when you're trying to grow tourism, and again, from Visit McMinnville, the way they grow is visibility, but it also is heads-on pillows, because that's what drives their revenue. And so it was a great question to ask, to see, are we overlooking something? But it was never the intent that Visit McMinnville have the study and then go forward with it. They're just sharing this detailed information with the city. And anyone else that would like to...
Completely. This is, this is open for public, for private investment, should that be something that someone looks to do.
Other questions? Well, Remy, did that, did that answer that?
I think so. I have some more questions, but I don't need to ask them right now. I just have some more questions about the firm and how, and how it, you know, I know through the, through the TLT dollars, there's not a lot else they could have recommended, really, in the sense that there was, there, as you and I talked about a year ago, when we were talking about restrooms and how public restrooms could be a great benefit downtown. And at that time, you guided me towards the really limited scope of what TLT dollars are allowed to be used for in terms of any type of public facility. And so when we got our packet and we, and, you know, I mean, we all read our packets, so, you know, as we went through it, and this was like, you know, 100-page document that was very clearly promoting the idea of a convention center here, you know, it drove me back to those conversations that you and I had at that time. And so I, you know, reviewed all the, you know, I reviewed the ORSs and, and really the only thing that TLT dollars could do, or that the firm could suggest to you that you would be legally allowed to do, would be to put in a convention center, which is something that they also developed. So, you know, that makes me ask questions.
Sure, as you should.
Right. Yeah, so that's, that's just kind of where I was coming from, was the, you know, it really what had piqued it was that I thought, well, how can, how can this, why are we getting this huge document on the idea of building a convention center when my memory was that you couldn't use it for any type of brick and mortar? And so then, in going back and reviewing that, I realized that, no, that's not true. A convention center actually is the kind of one brick and mortar type thing that you can use TLT dollars for. So that's where, that's where I'm coming from.
Other comments of Jeff?
I just had one there. Jeff, was there anything analysis on of the county, county-wise, as far as buildings being appropriate or potential of a convention?
They did call out the, and that's a good point. They didn't go too in-depth, but they did, they did hone in on our fairgrounds as a really large asset that could use more exploring, especially in equestrian-type events and the dollars that those types of things bring to areas. But that's about as far as, I mean, they looked at the county assets as far as event spaces, but they, what they honed in on is the, the potential for the fairgrounds to, to see development and to drive tourism.
Anything else that comes to mind, other areas, the county?
Not county-wide, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, I think what I'd like to do at this point is going back to the information that Visit McMinnville provided to us, kind of the overview of the budget. We have a sense of the, the dollars that they anticipate coming in and a breakdown on how they're going to spend that in a general sense. This is not real, the specifics aren't with us tonight, but I think we, as a council, need to at least address the budget and say that it looks in line with what we're, what we're looking at. They're presenting numbers to us tonight, so they can move forward. I know that there is a more detailed numbers piece to the budget, but just to give an opportunity for them to move forward. And so I'll just throw that out. We have on page 11, a overview of the budget in general senses, and if we could approve that this evening.
Do you want a motion?
Yes.
I move that we accept the budget as presented here and its general aspects.
Second?
It's been moved by Council President Manke and seconded by Counselor Dragpin. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So Jeff, you can feel comfortable that what you presented to us tonight, you, you, you as a organization can move forward, and the council's given you the go-ahead from that perspective. Any questions from that perspective?
I, no questions. I would like to let you know that we are going to begin sending sort of our monthly reports to council in general, so you can, I know that you, you report on those things, but I think that we're going to include those to everyone, so if you've got questions along the way, our marketing reports and sort of our, our monthly up-to-date, so look for those coming next month. And if you have any questions, just please reach out and let us know.
Any member of the board from Visit McMinnville have anything that they'd like to present at this particular time? Thank you for your attendance tonight. And again, it's our, our desire to continue to have, at least on an annual basis, that we get together and have a joint work session. We, we truly do appreciate the hard work and the focus and the results that you're, you're, you're experiencing, and I, I would say that it's only going to get better.
Thanks.
And so, again, thank you for being here this evening. With that being said, Jeff, anything that you might have as city manager? Okay, with that being said, we'll go ahead and close our work session this evening and thank Visit McMinnville for being a part of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The May 22nd, 2018 City Council meeting, I'll go ahead and open that this evening. And Alan, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Alan. That takes us to our part in the agenda tonight for public comment. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. We will limit the comments to three minutes and we have a speaking request for anyone that would like to, to speak. I haven't seen any come up to me. Anyone like to speak this evening before the council? I'll call one more time. Hearing none, we'll go ahead. And we've got a couple of individuals or groups that we'd like to welcome this evening. Councilor Rudin, I'll turn some time over to you for the first.
Okay, yes. A couple of people in the audience are here tonight. Kale Levanger is working on his citizenship in the community merit badge, and I'd like to recognize him. If he'd come forward up to the dais. And then he's with his mother, my daughter, Leslie Levanger. So I'm proud to, proud to do that.
We also have another group this evening, a fairly large group, but we'll have Sally come up and introduce this group. This is a group of individuals that are taking citizenship classes in the spring and wanted to come to the first part of our city council this evening. So Sally, why don't you introduce yourself and then those that are with you?
Thank you. I'm delighted to be here and I'm especially delighted to introduce this spring's citizenship class. My name is Sally Goddard. I'm the Executive Director of Unidos Bridging Community, and we're a nonprofit organization serving Yamhill County with the mission to promote the integration, participation, representation, and success of Latino individuals and families in Yamhill County, and also to build bridges of understanding and support among Latinos and non-Latinos. And we've been working with the Lutheran Community Services to provide citizenship classes three times a year, twice in McMinnville and once in Newburgh each year. And we're very pleased that Shemecada here in McMinnville and Portland Community College in Newburgh have allowed us to use their facilities, which are terrific for these classes. This year, we have had more than 50, excuse me, this spring, we have had more than 50 students, six volunteer teachers, and 10 volunteer assistants, including students from Linfield College and George Fox College. As, as Mayor Hill said, these students are studying for their exam that they need to take when they meet with U.S. Customs and Immigration Service and in their process of becoming naturalized citizens. Our course focuses on the 100 questions that they need to be able to answer correctly that have to do with government, civics, and U.S. history. And I would guess that the larger crowd in here might get 60 or 70% right on that. And so you would hope for the certain questions to be asked of you. This is the last day of classes for, last week of classes for us, and today's topic is civic participation. And so we've been talking about the first three words of the Constitution and thus decided to take a field trip to city council to see firsthand. Now, who knows the first three words of the Constitution?
We the people.
We the people. All right. So we wanted to see how we the people govern our community and how we can participate in that process. And we're so pleased that you represent us in the community and are doing that hard work for each of us. This spring, the, the students that were able to come tonight represent three different countries, and their time in the United States ranges from four years to 35 years. So that, so many have already been Oregonians for many, many years. We're fortunate that they have a pathway to citizenship and have chosen to apply for citizenship. We also know that many immigrants in our county do not have a pathway to citizenship, and many have been here for up to 25 years, but our current immigration laws are unable to allow them to apply. So we think about the DACA students that don't have the pathway to citizenship and the thousands of our neighbors, our coworkers, our family members, our employees, who are important members of our communities, who, who don't have the opportunity to apply for citizenship like the students here. So it's not an easy time in our country to be an immigrant, and we're going to continue to push for comprehensive immigration reform, just state and local laws, and worker protections. And as we talk to you folks, we are working on an ongoing basis for safe and inclusive communities, for all immigrant families in our county. So I honor the students here tonight. So all of you who are students, could you just stand up for us?
And Sally, just to let you know, I've had an opportunity for the last two years to go to the immigration services and, and, and be a part of the swearing-in, and, and it's one of the highlights of the opportunities I have to do, and I look forward to many of this group being in the next group that goes through that. But I'd like to come down and shake each of the students' hands, and we've got a City of McMinnville pin, and just to introduce you to the mayor of McMinnville. It may take us a couple of minutes, but I think it's well worth our time this evening, so.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. Do you folks want to come out from your seats and maybe just stand in front here? And the mayor would like to give you something. So come on out here.
We hope we have enough pins to start the congratulations and good luck to you. How are you? Good to see you. Thank you.
Hi.
Sorry when I went. Yeah, it's good.
And for any of you who have been schoolteachers, I do want you to know, this is the most motivated, serious, persistent class of students you will ever have. They're a great delight to work with.
And we always need more volunteers, so.
That's right.
They don't have the pitch, Sally.
That's right.
Thanks for coming tonight.
I apologize ahead of time for when we have to sneak out early, but we do.
Sally, do you want to make one more announcement on behalf of Unidos Bridging Communities? Yes.
Yes, I will. Jeff has already given me a hard time about this. Unidos Bridging Communities is very excited and delighted that we have now obtained enough funding to hire a full-time executive director, and we're so excited about that. That's a combination of grant monies and individual donations. And as of next Tuesday at 8:30, I will no longer be the executive director, but it is being turned over to a very excellent young woman that many of you know, Miriam Corona Vargas, and she will become the executive director of Unidos and lead us into the next decade. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. And again, welcome to the first part of our, our meeting this evening. I, I hope our proceedings help you understand this process that we go through. We do this twice a month, on the second and fourth Tuesday night, starting at 7 o'clock, and you're welcome anytime to come back and just participate by comments or just watching the process of, of how the city council works with staff to run the city. So again, welcome. Our next item on the agenda this evening is our consent agenda, and we have four items for consideration. The first one is a request for limited on-premise OLCC license from WD Lambert LLC DBA Geraldus, located at 226 Northeast Third Street. Our second request is for a winery OLCC license from Maine Liquor, located at 2830, or 2803 Northeast Orchard Avenue. Our third is a request for brewery public house OLCC license from Brightly Brewing LLC, located at 214 Northeast 11th Street. And then consideration for Resolution 2018-23, a resolution extending the approval of an option and tower lease agreement with Verizon Wireless LLC, amending Resolution 2018-06. And for those that read, that would be for a use of some space on our tower over at the fire department. Would any councillor request to have any item taken off the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved by, by Councillor Drapkin and seconded by Councillor Rudin. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying no? This consent agenda passes unanimously this evening. That takes us to our presentation this evening, and we're going to call on our police chief, Matt Skiles, to present to us tonight, and he's provided at the dais some, a brief report on smoke-free Third Street ordinance discussion. And, and so Matt, we'll turn that over to you, chief.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, staff. I feel like I've been in front of you for the last six months consistently, so as we're moving forward through this presentation tonight, I just want to sort of remind you about what we're talking about was a downtown safety task force recommendation. We met with you all March to give you our final report. The group of task force members, these were community members and partners that we meet with on a regular basis, that provided us some information that were very critical in, in moving that task force forward with some, some significant recommendations. I, I do want to say that I do appreciate, this is City Attorney Kosch's PowerPoint, and he, he was bragging about his, his prowess, so if it's, if it's, if it's...
It was Parks Director Susan Muir's PowerPoint that I hobbled together as our own.
Yes. So the, as the, as I mentioned, the final report, as we, as we talked about in, in March, really centered on a couple of things. One was already our implemented officer, that's downtown, Officer Height, is doing a very good job downtown. And then the, the, the really low-hanging fruit piece that we brought forward to you was the smoke-free Third Street, which you all, as you recall, accepted the recommendation of the task force to return later with a draft ordinance for a smoke-free downtown, which also would include city parks. That was initially, your, your recommendation was to move forward with that draft. And what we're going to present tonight is essentially a draft ordinance that's going to codify existing Oregon Public Health Law into city ordinance, allowing the city law enforcement officers to enforce public health laws. And then also, as I had mentioned, designate, and this is the big thing, designating Third Street to be a smoke-free zone as well as parks within the park system. Just as a reminder, the summer of 17, we had heightened issues downtown. We sent out surveys, and the, these were the, the six real main bullet points. I now direct you to the, the fifth bullet, which was drugs, alcohol, smoking downtown. The recommendation, like I said, the second recommendation after the, the officer being downtown was the adoptance of ordinances, or at least reviewing ordinances that would possibly come forward for your consideration, one being panhandling. And I, I think as you recall, just as a reminder, there's were a couple that needed some significant legal review, the third being a smoke-free downtown, in which the priorities were to essentially go interact with the MDA, our health department, the county health department, and talk with them, and then that we would be bringing forward some information to you all. I'd like to also stress, as we presented in March, was that we did have conversations with the Ashland Police Chief, who was having some downtown issues, much very similar to ours, and he indicated that the single most effective measure that they took to improve the behaviors downtown was a smoking ban in Ashland. I should say downtown, not, not the entire city. So the summer of 2018, we said, let's come back and bring something to you all that will, that will allow us to move forward on the task force recommendation. Like I, the first two bullet points were to engage the MDA and the county public health department. We've done both. Myself, Susan Muir have met, and Natalie, Deputy City Attorney, have met with the, the county health department. They're all on board for this. They have some money set aside for any signage. They have, they have a great, they have a great desire to see this move forward. As you recall, or if you didn't recall, in 14 and 15, the county health department worked with the MDA specifically about a smoke-free downtown and moving that direction. It did not gain any traction, but I... I would like to suggest, or let you know that from that data, back in 14 and 15, 73% of the public supported prohibiting tobacco use in downtown Mac. In addition, 83% of those surveyed by the health department would shop, dine, and visit the same or more often if there was a smoke-free downtown. So we did make those connections. We've also connected with the new executive director of the McMinnville Downtown Association, as well as the president, Jenny Berg. They're on board with moving this through. They will champion this with their membership and doing that outreach with them as we move forward. Obviously, there's going to be a great deal of education, a great deal of education as a major component of this as we move through this process. So the draft ordinances that you will see is essentially establishing Third Street as a smoke-free area from Adams to Johnson, and 25 feet north and south of that street, the intersecting streets, I should say.
How many feet is a city block down here?
Oh. City Attorney says about 200.
We have a map that shows what 25 feet looks like.
Okay, great.
Again, that would establish a smoke-free zone, Adams to Johnson, essentially the downtown exclusion zone. That's the zone that we're using right now within the court system, and then 25 feet north and south of the intersection of Third. It would prohibit smoking within that corridor, and is a violation, not a crime. It's a violation, much like a traffic ticket, with a maximum fine currently at $250. This is the overlay of the area that we're talking about. I'd like to thank the planning department, I believe, John Barnes, put this together for David. And this is essentially the corridor that we're speaking of. Adams is to your left, Johnson's to your right, and obviously Third Street. The green would be where the smoking would be prohibited, and so that's the general description of where we're talking about. Move forward to the next slide, which is a little bit better.
Chief, can I just, you don't have to go back, but what is the status of smoke-free in the library complex?
The library is, the library and city parks, upper city parks, city park itself, not all parks, is smoke-free.
Okay. So again, that would take that whole area that would be the library, and then go over to the aquatic center, all of that.
Yeah, and as we go through, there are five points to the proposed ordinance. One of those would be to expand that smoking ban to all park areas within the city.
So as you can see, this is, the green again is that 25-foot off of, north and south of that Third Street, not a huge, not a huge distance. We did talk in our meetings as a staff about uniformity. That makes it a little bit easier, that we know that 25 feet from the intersection was very consistent. In addition, this adopts, this smoke regulation would adopt state law, like we talked about, that is already in place for Oregon Health Law, which essentially says 10 feet from the bulleted points, entrances, exits, windows, ventilations, outdoor dining areas. There's already a 10-foot no-smoking area within the health code. This would simply adopt that health code into city ordinance and allow our officers or employees, to include park rangers, to educate, and last alternative, to enforce state health code, or, excuse me, which would become exist, city ordinance.
220 feet.
He's good. Again, it would adopt, and also the provision that employers provide places smoking for their employees. That's important. Again, it's, we're just mirroring state health law. Again, this is something that you routinely will see outside of businesses about the smoke-free and then the information about it, where you can and cannot. And then, in addition, it would prohibit smoking in park areas as defined by the code, so park areas would be, I believe, I don't want to correct me if I'm wrong, David, but I believe it's the parking lots as well as the parks themselves. That would be all parks.
Correct.
And then obviously adopt certain exemptions as set forth in ORS. So there's already some exemptions that are in there that would allow, whether it's a cigar bar, that sort of thing that's already allowed by state law. That's your exemptions.
Chief Skels?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask you? So I'm assuming that the businesses on Third Street, that have frontage on Third Street, but they have exits on the back, those still could be a smoking zone if they comply with the 10-foot rule?
You are correct, sir. Yeah, they would have the ability to use the alleyways as long as they're off Third Street, the backs of the businesses are 25 feet off the north or south. Yes, that, they would be allowed to smoke permitted.
Okay.
So like, for instance, I think we all know that there's some bars that have smoking, or some employees or patrons smoke out front. They do have rear exits that allow that to occur.
Thank you.
So I don't think we loaded the ordinance itself in. So I'm open, go ahead.
Everybody has a copy of it attached to the chief's report.
Go ahead, Remy.
I think, you know, sometimes things come up here and they seem like they should be no-brainers, but I do have a concern here that more forward conversation hasn't happened with the downtown businesses, even though you have the executive director and the, and board president of the MDA on board. That doesn't necessarily mean those downtown businesses are, and they will be affected, both the employees and the patrons. So I just, I feel like that's a, that's a really important piece to this, to incorporate that conversation before moving forward with an ordinance, to incorporate those businesses into, into the conversation and just have dialogue with them, because it's, because it is prevalent, especially in the nightlife and the nighttime businesses that exist downtown.
Yes.
So I can answer part of that question, councillor Drapkin. First of all, there was a lot of engagement outreach with a significant portion of the downtown business community during the task force meetings, and a lot of this information came directly out of that feedback and the survey work that was done that included a pretty high response from the downtown businesses. When we talked to the MDA about providing additional outreach and information, one of the things that they suggested was important, and we ultimately agreed, is to understand the details that the council was actually considering. And so they have held off on a formal outreach program until we can get some initial guidance from the council on what standards you want to see included in the ordinance. For instance, if you decide 25 feet's not enough, or too much on the side street, and want to go to 10, or want to go to 50, we want to be able to let them know that, so that when they're doing outreach, they can be as specific as they can about what the regulations would be to come. So that's the primary reason that they haven't done any formal outreach. They want to know what standards we're talking about. And so if the council were to decide you wanted to go from, you know, Baker to Irvine instead of Adams to Johnson, that's important information for them to share with the downtown businesses.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I hope I didn't lead you to like, ask or say that you're going to take action on this. We're really looking for a dialogue tonight about what the council feels comfortable with. And again, the city manager has said, we will go back, and that is one of our promises with the health department, with the MDA, going back and doing that outreach, that communication piece that is, like you suggested, and I would agree, is critical.
Okay, and what about for the businesses that aren't MDA members?
This would be something that, again, that the chamber could help with, assist with. Myself could, I'd be happy to go to, but again, if they're not members of the MDA and they're down there, I think it's still critical to get their input and their, at least their understanding of why the direction is that the, that the MDA and the businesses really did drive the task force to come to fruition because of the issues that were going on down there.
And the MDA is committed to do outreach to all downtown businesses, whether or not they're members of the association.
Chief, can you tell me a little bit about how you came up with the 25 feet and the exact, I mean, did you, was there, did you model it after another community, the language and the ordinance that you're suggesting, or?
That 25 feet was an arbitrary number that was picked to try to make it a meaningful distance off of Third Street, but not consume a majority of the block, or a significant portion of the block, just to, you know, to ensure that it was far enough back that it didn't defeat the purpose of the intended corridor. And then you, on top of that, you have a 10-foot restriction from every entrance, so, you know, even beyond that 25 feet, if there's a, an entrance to a business, you'd have to still move an additional 10 feet beyond the entrance to that business, if that happened to be the case on that particular side street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other discussions or questions?
I think on the geographics of it, from northwest Adams to Johnson, I think I'm fine with that, knowing that we can always adjust that if we need to at a later date, if we feel like we do need to go to Irvine, or beyond, or something like that. The 25 feet's a little short for me, but I'm not sure the depth of those businesses, for their rear exits, on how deep those buildings are, probably closer to 50 feet. And so I would like to see something like that, 50-foot, I mean, get it, get it away, you know, even 25 feet's from you to me, basically. And so the smoke still kind of has a tendency to move, and I'd like to see it farther back.
Alan, could you talk into your mic a little more? It's really hard to hear you down here.
Okay. Did you hear anything I said?
Some of it, yes.
Did anybody hear anything?
I'm good, but if you're going to keep talking, talk into your mic more.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussions or questions of the chief, or, again, the intent tonight is give some direction from a council perspective?
I think there was a strong feeling that since this is part of the Oregon code, basically dealing with restaurants and any kind of service area where they're serving food or anything like that, that it was an issue of, you know, providing something that was enforceable for the police to deal with, because they theoretically, they're not supposed to necessarily enforce the state code. So putting it into our code is what was recommended. And it was pretty much unanimous within the group, and there were a lot of store, shopkeepers and people on Third Street that were represented there, and people that floated in and out also.
I think it's important to, our discussion around the smoke-free zone had to do a little bit with loitering. We felt that when individuals loitered, they had a tendency to be smoking, and that was one of the things that the shopkeepers, just, you know, the loitering scared potential clients from coming in into their shops. And so that was one of the things that I think was around our discussion around this. And I'll agree with Kelly, the kind of sustaining that this is something we ought to do was overwhelming. We were so cautious not to, from a council perspective, say this is what we want to do, but it was more with a listening ear. And that committee, we allowed them to go the direction they wanted to go, with us just minimally kind of being there and having the group drive the conversation. So I don't know if that gives a little more context.
Yes, a number of people actually came and said, this is what we want to see.
Why not pursue no-loitering ordinance instead, you know, if that's, if the issue is loitering, then why not go after loitering specifically?
I think, I think they felt, yeah, number one, as attorneys told us, that you can't, you can't say loitering, and, but I think the group really had a strong feeling that they didn't want smoking, groups of people smoking in front of their establishments.
I would, I can interject with a couple stories. I know a couple years ago, when Pat with Tommy's had a significant issue with people hanging out in front of his shop that were causing issues, and that was one, I mean, they were smoking, and it was like, it was really difficult for him to allow that to happen, or even confront it himself as a business owner. And I'd even say that Third Street Oil and Vinegar, we would receive complaints about people just parked in front of their, in front of their business, smoking and acting in a manner that was not consistent with what we, what, I think it would be considered good behavior, so.
On top of which, it's also a health hazard.
I'm not against a no-smoking ban. I just, you know, the, these problem areas, they come along with the places where, you know, we have the kiosks, which are meant for people to be sitting and resting while they're enjoying our streets, but that's not, not what's happening, right? Instead, what you're getting are the, you're getting groups of people, and they are, and they're staying there, they're staying there for a long time, there's, you know.
Well, they can just as easily go around to the back of the store and smoke, as long as they're 10 feet away from the entrance.
Kelly, it's not about the smoking. What I'm getting at is, we're talking about this no-smoking ban, but the issues, that some of these issues and some of the problem areas are really popping up with a few other things that are, that seem to be at the root of them. So if, you know, people are congregating on the kiosks and, you know, I mean, because what are we going to do next? Can we say, okay, and no vulgar language can be used downtown, right? So I mean, we, my concern is that we're.
Well, this is something that you can see and is enforceable. I mean, it's been determined by state law. The thing is, I don't think loitering anymore is necessarily an enforceable thing.
It's not?
No.
Okay, and then, so I guess then the other part of that is then, what about addressing those problem areas? It kind of goes back to some of what you've, you've talked about before, which is the natural deterrents, like, you know, do we really, should we be asking ourselves the questions, what's going on with those kiosks if they're not serving populations that are, that are putting money back into the downtown, if, you know, if they're being abused and misused, then, you know, should that be part of this conversation as well? Is how do we look at that, and how do we evaluate those things that are downtown that are creating these draws, which is where, what there is outside of Tommy's and outside of Third Street Oil and Vinegar, and, I mean, we all know.
Well, there was a robust discussion about actually taking the kiosks down, or at least taking the benches and stuff out. The shop owners, I don't, I think, came down on the side that they prefer that they stayed, at least for the time being, but it was a concern.
And I think we have other items that we're going to address. We're just taking the highest priority that came out, and we're going to craft an ordinance and bring that forward. I think there's some other things that are, as the chief had in his presentation, that came, there was a list of things that we want to address that, in its due time, is going to come before us.
Fortified alcohol issue has actually come to us from the community that is considered homeless, or, you know, somewhat dispersed downtown, and, you know, they actually, a number of them have come in and said, we'd really like you to do this. The problem is defining what is fortified alcohol, and so that's why it's not on the table tonight. This was the most easily visible, enforceable type of thing to bring to a table first.
You know, the reason at the outset of the presentation, we wanted to lay the proper context for this, was in the context of the six months' worth of work that the, was it six months or three months, that downtown safety task force met?
We met, we finished up in March.
And did the survey and brought together recommendations, and of the three recommendations that were on that second set of issues to be addressed, the first issue was hire police presence downtown. That's been checked off. The second set of issues were the panhandling, the fortified liquor, and the smoking ban, as those were reviewed by legal counsel. Of those three, the smoking ban was clearly the most legally inoffensive approach to take. And we're still looking at the fortified alcohol one, to figure out what, if anything, we can do that isn't preempted by OLCC with respect to restricting sales of those types of liquors. And the panhandling ordinance is, quite frankly, it is a very challenging field to legislate in, because of the many First Amendment issues that come to play in terms of speech of the people soliciting alms from passersby, the right to rest, the right to peacefully assemble, and. assemble, and, and the behaviors associated with loitering and panhandling are not, generally tend to be behaviors that are constitutionally protected. And it's only in the, in the cases of aggressive panhandling, to the point of somebody, you know, harassing, which is already a criminal offense, or assaulting, which is already a criminal offense, the general behaviors associated with the speech and the hanging out in public spaces are not things that we can criminalize just because we don't like the look of somebody, or we don't like the way they smell, or we don't like the fact that they appear homeless or poor. We're not allowed to, to target those things and those characteristics. And beyond that, there are different communities that are trying various aspects to get to panhandling, whether it's within a certain distance of ATMs, or whether it's the handing of property or material from vehicles in the public right-of-way over sidewalks. I will tell you that those issues are ripe for litigation. They have not been fully tested through the courts, and my advice is that we should avoid having those more heavy-handed enforcement measures litigated through the courts with the city of McMinnville as a named defendant. And, and my advice is that we wait and see whether other jurisdictions are able to successfully navigate those waters and that we follow suit.
All right. So there's no bigger bites to be taken?
No, I think there are other things to be done, but this is the one that we're working on today.
Yeah. I think you'll, you'll see some other things that will come forward, persistent violators, that sort of thing, but right now, this was what the task force thought was, and we felt this was of urgency and doable.
Thank you, David. Any other questions or comments?
Something for, to clarify.
Go ahead, Alan.
Chief, when you have a corner business, like McMinnimint's downtown, where they serve food around the corner, how do you, is, is that called the establishment, is even if it goes out on the city sidewalk, is the establishment still established out there with a, as a, as a public?
So for liquor?
Or smoking.
Smoke. Well, you can't, you would not be able to smoke within a restaurant, so.
Yeah.
Or outside of a restaurant.
Or outside dining areas.
Outside dining areas.
That's my question. So if it's out on the street, it's still considered part of the restaurant?
You are correct.
Okay. And then, so that 25 feet around the corner probably wouldn't be sufficient in that situation, would it, if it's, if there's...
Well, there'll be an overlapping ban within those outside dining areas, an additional 10-foot buffer around each of those that'll be established. So of some of those side streets, it could be effectively more than 25 feet, but it will be no less than 25 feet up any of the side streets as it's proposed. Now, I mean, this isn't even, this isn't even brought to you for a first reading tonight. It's not that far along. This is just presented to you as a concept draft of what an ordinance could look like, and that's one of the many policy questions that the council can, can advise on as we, as we go back and rework it to bring it to you ultimately for a first reading.
Thank you.
Could I ask for just a little clarification? It looked to me like we are completely banning all of Third Street on Third Street, correct? It's not the 10-foot thing, but on the side streets, it might entail that.
It's an additional 25 feet up each side street to the north and the south.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just, because I think the state laws worded it a little different way.
Yeah. And state law is 10 feet from, from entrances. We could, again, that's another policy issue for the city. The city could decide, rather than adopt simply the 10-foot standard from the entrances and exits and outdoor dining areas and whatnot, we could, we could choose to impose a larger buffer of 15, 20, 25 feet. We couldn't go less than the 10 feet. It'd be ineffective.
And so just a thought that I have is, you know, Councilor Rudin was talking, going from Adams to Johnson, I think that's appropriate. You know, we've walked, as we were doing wayfinding, and anything that is east of Johnson really isn't incorporated in shops. It's much, it's a much more open. We've determined that to connect Alpine to the downtown core area, that we'd probably use Galloway as the path that would go down Galloway and then go over to the granary station, just because of the railroad and the, you almost go a little bit, I won't call it a blight area, but it's not, it's not a friendly walk once you get past Johnson. So I would agree, but as we make enhancements on Third Street down to, down to Lafayette Avenue, we may want to readdress that, but we're not to that point. And then the other piece is, you know, I have a feeling that I'd like to see the 50 feet going back on the side streets. I think it gives us a little more protection. I'd hate to see the loitering to happen at 25 feet, a larger grouping, because what we're trying to do is to continue the beauty and the livability and the functionality of Third Street, which is one of our gems. We, we've been recognized for that, and so I would just throw out at some point to, I'd be in favor of a 50-foot on the side streets, too.
Any other comments?
I would be in support of that also. I feel like some of the side streets really do function as part of Third Street, and so giving a little bit of extra buffer to where that, you know, the stores, even if the door doesn't go around the corner, that usually the patrons will utilize those sides, some of those side streets, and keeping it a little bit, the buffer a little bit greater on those side streets would be...
For reference, each one of those blocks between Second and Third is about 200 feet, not 220, sorry. And each building that fronts on First Street is approximately 100 feet long. So if you were to expand it from 25 to 50 feet, you'd be taking it about halfway up the side of each of those buildings, just generally speaking, for frame of reference.
Other comments?
Well, hearing none, I think, as we've had this discussion, I think we moved forward from this draft to coming up with, and I've heard nothing under the section 1, 2, 3, or 4, other than maybe looking, well, at this point, it looks like we may have a direction of 50 feet on the side street, but the definitions, the smoking, smoking prohibited, downtown smoke-free zone, and the penalty for violation, I've heard nothing that would leave this draft form to take back to staff, other than the 50 feet.
So then my, my last question for staff direction is, we had indicated the possibility of bringing this back to council as soon as your next meeting for a first reading. However, if, if there needs to be, or the council's desire is that we push the MDA for more engagement, it's more likely that we would be pushing that to the second meeting of June, if not the first meeting of July, to ensure that that process happens. So I just, I raise that for council direction on when you want to see this come back to you.
So I can weigh in. I talked with Brad from the MDA, and I think his sense, particularly of the membership, recognizing that not 100% of the Third Street businesses are members, is that they would, they are largely, if not entirely, in support of a smoke-free Third Street, and would prefer to see the regulation in place sooner rather than later. I think he'd rather press to do a concentrated outreach and not delay action if the council were inclined to take action.
And Jeff, that was my, that's my feelings. I've talked to Brad also. I mean, they can enable their group very quickly through emails. It's a group that's very tight, and so my thought would be that we get a hold of the MDA as soon as maybe tomorrow, to let them know a direction we're going, so that we, we have that information for them. But I would say, I'd like to move forward quicker than later.
Yeah, with summer coming on and everything, if they are already discussing this amongst themselves and are not surprised by it, which is obviously the case, then I don't see any reason not to move on it at this point.
Okay. Matt, do you, do you feel comfortable moving forward?
Directions clear.
Okay.
We'll move on it.
Thank you for the presentation tonight, and as we've said, thank you for yours and Susan's direction with that downtown advisory committee. That was a great committee to be a part of, and, and I think we'll now see some of the results of those many discussions.
It was very interesting, and you guys did a terrific job, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for leading it.
Thank you. Well, that takes us to our resolutions this evening, and for consideration, Resolution 2018-24, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2000, is it 1819?
No.
No, 1718, and making supplemental appropriations, general fund, fire department, and ambulance fund. And so we'll call on Marcia to make our presentation on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Resolution 2018-24, as you said, proposes a supplemental budget for the fire department and the ambulance fund for fiscal year 2017-18. This supplemental budget is related to our city firefighters responding to a number of Oregon and California wildfire conflagrations in 2017. And in Oregon, those included the Nina Springs Millie Fires, Chet Coburn, and Eagle Creek Fires. Because of that response, additional overtime costs were incurred and also some equipment costs. The city has received reimbursement from the state of Oregon and from California, and the total received from the state of Oregon was $175,305, and from California, $211,910. I wanted to mention that personnel costs are allocated for firefighters is allocated between the fire department and the ambulance fund. So the reimbursements were, for the personnel costs, were allocated accordingly. The reimbursement for the equipment cost went to the fire department because the equipment that was used in the responses, fire equipment. Rich, do you have anything to add to that?
Any questions for Marcia or Chief Lifer? Hearing none, then I will call for a motion.
Aye, so move.
So we have had a call for a motion on Resolution 28, 2018-24 by Council President Mankey, and a second by Councilor Rudin. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. This resolution passes unanimously. That takes us to our second resolution this evening, 2018-25, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2017-18, and making supplemental appropriations for our airport fund. And so Marcia, we'll turn that over to you for a discussion.
Thank you. Resolution 2018-25 proposes a supplemental budget for the airport fund for fiscal year 1718. This supplemental budget is related to some unforeseen costs that were identified during some construction projects out at the airport, and an additional project that was approved by the FAA. So while there was some work, work going on out at the airport on the 4-22 runway rehabilitation project, there were some additional costs that were identified, and they were relating to removing and replacing some utility vaults, additional storm conveyance, infrastructure, unsuitable soil excavation and stabilization, and an FAA flight check. The FAA also approved funding for the next airport project, which is an apron taxi lane project. I also wanted to mention that FAA and O D A Critical Oregon Airport Relief Grant Funds are available to cover these costs. So if there's any questions, I believe Mr. Bissett is in the audience tonight that could answer any questions for us.
Any questions for Marcia? Mic's here also. Hearing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2018-25.
So moved.
A second. It's been moved by Councilor Rudin and seconded by Councilor Stassen. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay. This Resolution 2018-25 passes unanimously. That takes us to advice and informational items, reports from councilors on committee and board assignments, and so I will start with Councilor Rudin, and then we'll just work our way through.
Mayor, I don't have anything to report at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Remy?
The McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force meeting has been postponed. Normally, it would be tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. It is being postponed by one week, so it'll be on May 30th at 10:00 a.m. at the Community Development Center, large conference room.
Thank you. Wendy?
The Urban Renewal Advisory Committee has not met, so I don't have anything to report on that, and I'll leave it to my fellow counselor and mayor to report on the economic heating that we've been attending. So nothing to report for me.
Thank you. Council President Mankey?
Well, since you heard the Bissett-McMinville presentation, which is basically anything I would have reported, Parkway, actually, there wasn't a tremendous amount of new information there either, although Mayor Hill and Dave went and testified in regard to some other possible funding things that might be done, and money opportunities which we're hopeful for. So I'm just not thinking of anything that I have to report at this point.
Okay. Just some of the things that we've been involved in, again, the Parkway, we had reporting out from our division head, Lisa, and one of her representatives, and giving us real updates as to where we're sitting on Phase 2. Again, funding continues to be a concern there. As Council President Mankey indicated, Mr. Hoggleberg and I had an opportunity to go before the Oregon Transportation Committee on Thursday morning in Portland and testify on behalf of the Parkway. We have some federal FAST funds that are going to become available, but they max themselves out at 25 million. You take our 22 million, we have our 18 million of savings from Phase 1, the 25 doesn't get us to the 90 to 100 million needed to do design and right-of-way purchase for, for Phase 2. Thus, the state doesn't feel like they could support us in going for the 25 million for Phase 2, but we're thinking of some opportunities to enhance Phase 1 that gives a little more travelability to what's happening there. And the state, well, these grants, there's only going to be three in the state of Oregon, they're really focused for rural application, and we feel like we are set in a position to possibly warrant one of those grants that could enhance Phase 1. So more to come on that front, but that's why we went in front of the O T C. We had Matt Garrett, who is the director of ODOT, and then we had the commission that we spoke to. So more to come from that perspective. We had a Bissett-McMinville meeting last week, and you heard their presentations tonight, much like what we, but in much more depth. Their 45 minutes was two and a half hours, but they did a good job in presenting, and again, I think, as I've talked to Kelly and as I've talked to Jeff, we're walking away feeling really good with the budget processing that this organization's doing. They had a few missteps when they started, and it, it had to do with the financial advisor that they were utilizing, and we're back in line, we're taking care of, of any of the misbudgeting, and I won't call it misbudgeting, but they allocated things a little quicker than they ought to. They're back on...
They've tightened things up significantly, let's put it that way.
And, but we're back on solid footing, and you're going to see in this fiscal year, they'll be totally back where they need to be. They have more laser focus to what they need to have happen, so really good from that perspective. I know many of us have had an opportunity over the last two weeks to be a part of, whether it be economic or strategic planning discussions, we're still going through some of that, and I'm just seeing the beginning of some light at the end of the tunnel of the strategic process. We had Monday an opportunity to look at our, our economic development plans, and just a lot of information. just a lot of information. And we, we spent an hour and a half and still didn't have the kind of dialogue we needed to have. And so, but again, I, I'm feeling really good that come the end of August and as we move into September, we're going to have some solid, solid direction for us to, to work on our strategic plans, whether it be the city's strategic plan or the economic strategic plan. The last thing that I'd just like to bring up is that I had an opportunity last Friday, uh, to be a part of, um, the M E D P, um, um, industrial tour out at the high school. We went through their, uh, new shop area that has been, um, assembled. And so they have a natural sciences wing, they have a, uh, a wood shop wing, and they have a metal shop wing. And I'll tell you, um, we, we took the tour, we had industry leaders, and we then brought the industry leaders and had a very strong dialogue about what could we do from an industry to engage with the high school to help our kids be more prepared where they want to go technically. Uh, we also, the day before, went out to Solid Form Fabrication and took two groups from the high school and went with the Piola Brothers and, and took a look at their new, uh, shop and what they're doing out there. And I'll tell you, there were three students that Devon says, I want to talk to you when you graduate from high school, because your focus is where it needs to be. And they talked about what they, um, um, you know, that they could provide the training that would take them into a career that could, could be wage earner, uh, and family supportive. And so, again, there's just so many good things happening, uh, with the groups that are partners with the city. And, uh, and from an educational standpoint, you know, we had an opportunity to hear from Mary Alice Russell that talks about how engaged the McMinnville School District is, uh, with their pass-through to graduation, many of the areas that are having great success. And so, again, I just share with this little extra time I have and some of the things I'm able to be a part of. I'm pleased, uh, at so many of the directions that are going on. Uh, it just helps me know, know that when we get through this strategic plan, it'll even help the council be more focused in developing the programs and the, uh, the livability of this community. So I'll, I'll leave it at that, but just some really good things and just proud to be able to be a part of the city and the good work that the council's doing. Um, let's go to department heads. Chief?
Uh, just real quick, uh, we did start the Park Rangers up, uh, so they're out and about, and they're in red shirts this year. So, um, I'll let you know, we have, I think upwards of eight or nine, and they're, um, a good crop of people. So, uh, be on the lookout. They will be out and about. They're on Third and working some of the, I believe, Parks, uh, Upper City specifically.
Thank you, Chief. Chief?
I have nothing to report at this time, sir.
Thank you. Marcia?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I see Scott in the back.
London Bridge.
Okay. And Melissa? David?
Yeah.
And Jeff?
Uh, I'll be taking a few days, uh, starting on Thursday morning. I'll be out of the office through, uh, the Memorial Day holiday.
Thank you. Uh, hearing nothing else, I'll go ahead and, well, again, a part of our, uh, packets was the cash investment report for February, and that is in your packet. And so I'll go ahead and conclude our city council this evening. Uh, just remind councilors that we are going to go into executive session under O S R, uh, 1926622D to conduct deliberations with persons designated to cow, carry out labor negotiations. And so it's an addition to where we've been earlier before this meeting. So thank you all for attending tonight, and it's good to, to, good to see everyone.